All right, please. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing on our agenda tonight is meeting is of minutes, public and non-public from November 12th. So entertain a motion on go.
I'll make motion to accept the minutes from November 12th. Public and non-public.
Okay, two seconds.
Second.
Okay, hold seconds. Oh, great. Any comments, concerns, corrections? Nothing jumped out. Nothing jumped out at me. Thank you as always, Pamela. All right. Okay. All right, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, public and non-public of November 12th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions.
I abstain.
You abstain because he was not here, so, all right, there we go. All right, public comment, we are gonna have, we'll have a public comment and then we're gonna have a presentation for the testing data and then we'll have another public comment section after that and then we'll have the rest of our meeting and public comment again at the end if you want to be here at the end for more public comment. So, public comment now, if anyone has anything they'd like to say, it's fine. Yes, Mr. Cottrell?
I'll get my friends who've asked for my hat on tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the Honor Society on the Thanksgiving boxes. And I come with a concern. And the concern is, we only fed 43 families for Thanksgiving this year and we normally have 70 to 75. And that's becoming conservative, concerning. Because at our other food pantries, we're seeing more people, not less. We need to find a way to communicate to the families. Because we got the word yesterday. It's open until Friday for Christmas, if there's only 34 so far. So I think we need to get the word out there to the families, I don't know how, we can't do it because of privacy issues, it's up to the school to do it. We're seeing the same thing in the food pantry at the high school. We are not seeing as much food going out of there as we normally do. And that's concerning because food insecurity is not better, it's worse than it was a year ago. And so, I leave you with that. I don't have an answer, but I got a lot of questions.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Reintroducing myself now as the official sworn in state representative. Given the arguments from the Supreme Court today, I wanted to make sure that y'all knew there will be introduction of several bills. We had meeting, another representative and I had meeting this morning with Democratic leadership. And we're gonna be introducing a series of bills, all aimed at property tax relief via additional funding for the education trust fund to up the state's portion, hopefully. The likelihood of passage is not high, given the fact that we're 40-plus seats in deficit. But the main bill, not to get into the weeds, but the main bill essentially is aimed at trying to eliminate an advantage that multinational corporations, particularly foreign multinational corporations have in terms of our business profits tax. They essentially can evade most, if not all, of their tax liability, which puts more burden on domestic companies, New Hampshire companies. And there was a study from 2019 that said, a change in the law to make them pay their fair share could produce as much as $177 million additional just for the state of New Hampshire. I personally think that that's probably in excess of $200 million at this point. So, and the simple, and the simple answer is, the bill right now is titled worldwide combined reporting. I prefer the title, which I think we're gonna change, I'm gonna be a co-sponsor of the bill, to call it complete corporate reporting. Essentially what it would do is require companies to report their activities overseas as well as domestically, which would give then the Department of Revenue Administration a better handle on exactly what a company, for example, like, there's a company called Ahold, which is a Netherlands-based company that owns, for example, the Hanaford grocery stores. And the examples, there's example after example, but right now they're able to, through accounting government, shift their profits out of New Hampshire, out of the US. So we're hoping to attack that very specifically, we'll be looking at putting those additional funds into the education trust fund and trying to reduce the property tax burden. So, look for that bill, like similar bills, and I hope we can garner your support.
Thank you, representative. Any other public comment at this time? Okay, like I said, we'll have public comment again after the presentation, so April, I presume this is you.
This is me.
April Guinness, our curriculum coordinator, is going to take it away.
Thank you. Hopefully you can see this. I'll let the children learn, but somebody came once, it displeased you a little bit. But I wanted to go into through the historical assessment data. So, in the district, we, I'm gonna trip over these harden. We use the NWA for short, but it's the Northwest Educational Assessments. It's, test is required by the district, it's grades one through 10, it's an adaptive test in English language arts, so reading and some writing, and then in mathematics. We take it in the fall, winter, and spring, and then we use that data for Title I eligibility, improve our structural practice and place sense of students. I'm not gonna talk much about NWA because the data that the principals have prepared in their quarterly reports deals with NWA. So SASS is our New Hampshire statewide assessment system, it is required for grades three through 11. They tested English language arts and mathematics, both ELA and math was three through eight. And then they take science in grades five, eight, and 11. It's taken in the spring, and again, we use that data to improve structural practice, placements for students in determining Title I eligibility. At the high school level, they take the New Hampshire SAT, and that's all 11th grade students. Again, it's in mathematics and ELA, and then is in ELA, the SAT portion, they'll take that in the spring. So, overall, looking at our building, SASS and SAT scores, because again, the high school is, this is their SAT data, this is their SASS data, they're the only building that does both. So this gives you an idea, if it is blue, that means you're the top 25% of the state. If it's in gray, it's in the middle 50% of the state. And if it's in orange, it's in the bottom 25%. So that gives you overall the grades, or the proficiency grades and the target for the state. So, for the high school and the middle school, it's just that building and all of the grades within that. So for EBS and CES, it's, we're just talking about third and fourth grades, because those are the only grades that are tested in those buildings. So what I did was I did a side-by-side comparison of two years ago's data and what last year's data looks like. So we're starting off with math, we're kind of the same for math. So, the green means that we are at or above the state proficiency level. And yellow, if there's gonna be yellow in this one, means that we're in the 3% to 4% difference, so we're just sort of under. And then red is at 7% or more away from the state target. Looks a little scary here, but we've got some stuff in place to help sort of bring that back. Here are our ELA, again, two years ago, last year. So you can see like fourth grade was in the yellow before, it dipped a little bit, but not much, but we're, again, gonna put some stuff in place to hopefully bring these scores up. And then science, looking really good in science, like we've made some gains there, which is exciting. So fifth grade had a little dip, but not too far.
Did the parameters change? Sorry, because on 22, 23, it has 41% as red, but then on 23, 24, it has 39 as green.
So...
So like, did the state proficiency level change?
Right, exactly. The state proficiency in science used to be 41, and now it's 39. We're green because we went from 24 up to a 38, so we are just within proficiency level here.
For both?
For 11th grade's science.
Okay, I was talking about the other one, the SAS science. No, no, same screen, SAS, New Hampshire science. Oh, that's the state standard.
So, these are, this column, sorry, is the state proficiency level.
Never mind then, I couldn't read it.
But it's good, like, you'll see here it dropped.
Yep.
A percentage, but we gained quite a bit.
Okay.
And again, when we look at the two tables, we're not comparing the same sets of kids. So I did put the data in a couple of slides where it's cohort-based. And then here's what we're looking at for the SATs. Yes, it's still not where we want it to be, however, we are making gains, right? We went from a 19% to 23% proficiency, so we're closing the gap there. And then for ELA, same thing. We went from two years ago at 36% up to a 49%, so we've made quite a bit of gains there. The state has still upped their proficiency level, but we're, we're closing the gap. All right, so then when I looked at the cohorts, because that's the easiest way to do it. So the color coding is on the diagonals, so this grade here is this year's sixth grade. So, they had a decrease. This is the first time they took in third grade, had a little bit of increase, and then something happened. Not quite sure, if I had to guess, could be, it was a little rough in fifth and sixth grades last year, new math program, different expectations of what the math program asks, that could have been a factor. So we're seeing this year's freshman class had a nice increase, but a lot of them overall you can see dipped after COVID. So I think we're still kind of seeing the effects of COVID and them not have been being in school as much in their earlier years. I took this data and showed it to you in a nice line graph, so by each grade, so here's the increase, that's that freshman class, the rest of CAD sort of dipped, but this eighth grade class is, looks like it's kind of coming back up, so we'll see how they go. Here, same thing, cohorts, same colors, but for English, we've had two groups that have increased overall. Still seeing a slight decrease, but some of them are trying to make it back up, so we're hopeful there. Here is the nice line graph where you can see the two grades that are increasing, fifth grade is back here, the blue is hidden, but... So I thought it would be helpful, sixth grade is where we're seeing a lot of the struggles, but sixth grade's also the year in the SASS that there's a calculator portion and non-cal calculator portion of the test. So these are sample questions from the practice test site that anybody can use, like you don't have to have an accounts login, so it's free for me to show you these. So you can get kind of variety of what the questions are. I know when I first got this, was the very first question that popped up, I was like, why is it even a calculator? And then I realized that's not a calculator, that's how they want them to type in their answers. So I was like, that might frustrate some kids, like, why isn't this calculator working? Well, because that's not what it's for. So it's a lot of like solving and being able to represent and use the actual like testing site. So the kids have to be comfortable with it, they have to have seen it. These two questions might look simple, but it requires the kids to be able to picture in their head and move things around. So we've talked about, like, the kids get to use scratch paper on the SASS. Doesn't say it has to be blank paper, it can be graph paper. So the teachers are gonna be giving them graph paper. So that'll help with kids being able to pop these coins and hopefully answer the question a little bit easier than going on and guessing. And then this is another multi-part one where I couldn't get it all in one screenshot, so it's pieced together, but it's no longer just a quick calculation and you're done. You've got to be able to find missing values on both sides, then you have to plot it and be able to use the software comfortably. Looked at some ELA, there's nine questions for this one passage that the kids have to read, but there are multiple parts for each one of those. So, it just gives you an idea of like what the kids are looking at. Then the next set of questions, they had to read both passages and then answer questions. And then the third type that I ran into where the green boxes, the kids have to decide if that is correct, and if it is, they leave it, if not, they have to click on it and they have to change it to the correct thing. So, they've got to be able to use commas appropriately, et cetera. So those are the types. I did include a link directly to a practice site if you're interested, I'll share it with you, you can check it out. So now it's kind of, so what are we doing to help improve our scores? So this DEET has put together sort of a support team that talks about interims and modulars. They were here this morning, training the middle school staff on how to use them, how to look at the data and all of that. They are scheduled to help out the elementary schools on Friday, so they'll show the teachers exactly the difference between interims and modulars and what they can do with them. So, modulars is the easy one to explain, it's fixed. There's like eight to 12 questions, and the kids will see those eight to 12 questions repeatedly. What can they do with that? Well, as a classroom teacher, they can put one on the board to start the day and say, all right, we're gonna talk about this problem. It looks like what it's gonna look like in the actual testing platform, but the kids can work through it cooperatively with the teacher, they can go, I wonder, like, when you wonder, when you notice, those types of things. They can take it as many times as they want. It can also be given as homework. The interims mimic what the state summative test is most like. So there's approximately 30 items per test, but not every kid gets the same exact questions. It's a little bit more adaptive and it can't be accessed outside of school. Both sets of these are still in a secure window, so even like the home, can you give it as homework? They really can't do it at home, they have to do it sort of like in class during like an intervention block or something like that, so. So the interventions that we have in place, or that we're putting in place, so at the elementary schools, we added an intervention block at both buildings. They've got tiered intervention for reading and they are getting the interim and modular practice. So they'll get some training on how to use those, and then we'll roll out, like, here's how many interims you should be doing in a month, and here's all of that. In the higher school, we were able to hire a Title I tutor, so that's gonna help with our math scores. They rearranged some teaching staff, so that the people who are the strongest in math are the ones teaching math. They also have an intervention block and they're doing the interim and modular practice as well. The high school, their department's been working on PSAT and SAT prep, they've got a flex block for interventions, they're using Khan Academy, they have a math tutor that works multiple days a week, Tina, three days a week, and then they'll be doing the interim and modular practice for science. So that's sort of where we're at overall and what we've got in place, what we're working on to improve our scores. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, any questions for April? Thank you so much for presenting that.
No, try to do it one.
Even though we've had kids take all those tests, it's nice to have it explained and what is what, so. Any questions from the board?
I know you were doing kind of an overall curriculum alignment and review. How do you see that impacting what you just put up there tonight and the timeframe of that?
So I think looking at it specifically, I'm working with a data team at the middle school, we're gonna look at the staff's data and where the kids are getting questions wrong and look at where that lines up with the new math program and figure out, is it because we just didn't get to it last year, or is it, like, we need to rearrange how, the order of which we do things? So, I think they feed into each other quite well. ELA, that curriculum committee is looking at, they've looked at the data in the past with Angel, so we are looking at making sure the program, the next program that we pick does meet the, what we need and it has a good alignment to what we're seeing with the staff's data.
Cool. Do you have questions? Yes?
Yeah, so one of the, first of all, thank you, this was, this was really great to see kind of that perspective and also what we're doing next in order to turn the curve on things. Knowing that we definitely have folks in the community that I think don't have a sense of what the numbers mean or the context in which it comes from and what are the types of interventions and the activities that we have in place in order to, to change things. Have you ever thought about even recording a video that could be put on our website that is kind of an easy explainer for community members, especially those that don't currently have children in school and might be having some of these conversations with teachers directly? Just so that when, when we hear, why should we, why should we continue to support the budget or the negotiated agreements when it comes time to vote if our scores aren't even very good? Or those are, like, can, is there something that we can break down, you know, in, in just a couple of minutes, maybe not the whole presentation, but like some little nuggets of that that we could use as a way to point, something to point people to that have concerns or questions, but maybe don't have the time or are not, don't have the inclination to reach out to you directly and, and also be efficient with your time so that you don't have to answer, you know, if 50 people came to you, you wouldn't want to have that same conversation 50 times if you could potentially have a recorded video that you could point them to to say, I'm so glad that you asked this question, it's something that's really important to us, here's, here's a quick synopsis on what we're doing right now. If you have additional questions, let me know, you know, something like that.
I'm sure I could work with Seth and Cam.
Just a suggestion, because I, I think that it might be helpful. Right, again, as we, as, you know, as we get into that season where we're looking for community feedback in the form of positive votes and support with, with our warrant articles, this will be something I think that, that could be helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, this is, this is great. My, my biggest concern was the, the jump from fourth to fifth grade math, but it sounds like you've got some plans, you know, are, are we looking at what are we doing in fourth grade that's, we're doing right, that, that maybe isn't translating, or is there something we're not getting to, or, you know, something like that?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna look at with that data team.
Because I know it's a big adjustment going to middle school and I get that, but, you know, we, we can certainly address, like, find those issues that kids are having, so I'm glad we're on that, so. Anything else?
I got one thing.
Yes, Bruce.
Back to the SATs for the 11th graders, SATs, I think what I've understood for colleges aren't too prevalent anymore, but they're still, they should, SAT should, the left 11th, 11th graders on should, it should give, I thought before you guys had a little testing forum ahead of time before they took the SATs ahead of time. I know colleges don't really go, a lot of them nowadays aren't going by that, anyway, so.
So I know that the high school does do PSA...
What's that?
PSAT test prep in their classes, and then they also take the PSAT in ninth, 10th grade, I didn't make sure I didn't say the wrong grade, I'm looking at Tina. So they are doing practice tests for the, for preparation for the SAT.
Okay.
They're also using the Khan Academy to help as well, get some of the skills that the kids are looking for.
Anyone else on the board? All right, open up the general public comment, any questions, comments from the public? Oh, you know? All right, thank you, April, thank you so much. All right, next thing on our agenda, we have our student representative reports. Lily, we got your written report, but go ahead and take it away.
All right. So, starting with sports, I know that it was like a few weekends ago, but the football team did win their first ever championship title. And then for like winter sports, practices are in full swing now and scrimmages are starting up. Off the side, a few scrimmages now and they have one next, this week, I think they have one tomorrow. For writers, for clubs, for writer's guild, there's a literary magazine that came out, which they have to show you later. The art club has been hosting like cookie decorating workshops and other holiday little crafts and stuff. AV club was helping with like the auditions for Write This Up On this week and giving stuff for like sports recording, or Big Will do that. And we had four students, or three students attend a tech conference last week. For interactive club, they've been cleaning up on trails and working with like other schools to prepare for their riding, Rise Against Lumber mealpacking activity and getting the next ones, robotics, wrapping at the preseason, beginning their real season engineering. The math team has a meet tomorrow here. NHS, the staff bike class coming up on the 17th, Saturday, 6th, December 17th. The arts department, they have their auditions for the Little Couple Horses and Rodeo Cyclone this week. Ben and Corse, IRS has a concert tonight. The high school's concert is next week, December 19th, at 7:00. Me and Joe auditioned for all kids on the 23rd, whatever. A group of us that made to only live band on the 25th. There's bands been having lots of rehearsals, student council, has been working on their carnival and splitting into many subcommittees in the big group. And then there's also like each class has their own individual council. Freshmen have been planning the craft, or they, they planned the crafter, and they've been working to bring their class together. They had 780 period before Thanksgiving break, they all met in the community room for the activities to grow their class. The sophomores are talking about fundraising, the juniors have been living at prom, seniors have been working on senior stuff, like waiters that were due on the 6th, caps and downs, fundraisers for Project Grad, craft forums where there was an event in the library for students planning for college. There was, the first semester is wrapping up soon.
Yeah.
And in senior seminar, all the seniors are working on their final year projects in the current classes. We have holiday break coming up soon, progress of course coming up. And I met to the student for representative conference and concert on Saturday. And got like information, my dad and me, my reports better, like talking throughout like the other schools, like IRS and KIN and field. And bringing up any necessary things if we need to be bothered working with the students, get more into it, talking about financial issues, so we did talk about the whole thing happening at like the courthouse for...
The lawsuits, the double lawsuits going on, yeah, yeah.
Sorts of financial stuff, like I didn't know a lot of it, so it was good information and a bunch of other kids that we met, so.
Cool. Thank you. Any questions from the board for Lily?
I want to make another comment because her principal's sitting right there, I might not make this meeting. She, she is the best student rep we've had, well, we've had on this board since I've been on this board for a couple million years. I just want to make sure you know that.
I listen to you every meeting.
I don't care.
Watching at home.
Well, it's good, but...
She's got you here tonight, too.
You got me here in person tonight, so you don't have no cardboard cutout sitting here in the chair, okay? But that is, she is just amazing and I can't wait to see what else she's gonna do when she gets, graduates out of here. She's, she's been one of the best who's been here, and I want to make sure you guys know that and commend her because she's gonna be leaving here in June.
She's setting the, she's setting the bar high.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Setting the bar high, because I already got, already got the Kamala's replacement we need.
Really quickly, I'm sure you can't wait.
What?
Can't wait.
I'm sure she can't wait.
I, I love you too, so I don't want to worry about that. All right, that's all I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Bruce.
I just wanted to make sure that you know that.
Yeah, definitely. Anyone else on the board, any comments, questions on that for Lily? Thank you so much, that is awesome to hear. Thank you so much, that is awesome to hear. A lot of good stuff happening in here and I'm glad you're here to go to that conference because, you know, you learn a lot and you get to meet other kids doing the same thing, so.
I just hope your, your, your drive is better than mine on that day because I took an hour and a half to get on the conference.
It would be great, you know, to, to think about, I mean, Bruce was talking about, you know, that you'll be graduating, he's excited to see what to do. I would love to see some sort of process manual or standard operating procedures that you put in place, working with Mrs. Fleming on like, these are the things that really worked or these are the things that I got really good feedback on so that the next person who's filling the student representative role will have a place to start that isn't from scratch. Will have kind of like, these are the types of things that's what we're likes to hear about or that it's, it's helpful to do, you know, and that you've learned about through the conference and through, through all of your activities. Be great to have that for the next person.
Yeah, that's great.
She needs to get extra credit, she needs to get full credit, that's what she needs to get.
Next on our agenda, we have our joint loss management committee meeting minutes. You have those in there, I'll just go through those quickly. Joint losses for, you know, injuries and things like that. They had some recommendations on things, custodial staff checking up on, you know, things, fountain for leaks and mats and slips, prevent slips and things like that. They reviewed the safety plan and that was all good. So that was joint loss committee. Up next, there's also co-curricular activities committee in your, in your packet.
You've got the, yeah, I mean, you've got the, you've got the notes in your, in your packet. One of the things that, that I think people don't realize is out of the couple hundred kids that we have here at the high school, a hundred and thirty-five of them participated in fall sports. And it, it just goes to show that there's a lot of involvement and participation in different co-curricular activities. So there's a number of things about like what's going on. We also had a report from I R S and that's about another hundred students participating in, in fall sports. So it's, it's, it's really exciting to continue to see the involvement. There was a volunteer interest survey, there wasn't a ton of responses, so hopefully we'll get some more of that and we talked about some policy. So our next meeting is in January.
I have a question for you. I know that kind of pre-COVID, we were working on kind of gathering data for both, you know, sports and other co-curricular activities. So if you keep better track of all that, are we still doing that?
Yeah, I think that's happening both with Mr. Sevins and with Miss Natio. I think that they're keeping track of the participants and that's why we see the numbers that we see here on this report, for example. And they continue to have conversations about, as far as interest.
Yeah, and we were doing surveys.
And other things, yeah. They continue to have conversation. I don't know that it's a formalized survey, but the conversations are happening at the building level as far as what are the, what are the, the current passion projects and how do we equip our students to figure out ways to explore those within school, within the school day or outside of the school day? So that they can factor that into their overall learning opportunities.
Any other questions on co-curricular?
No, I just need to build a bigger trophy cabinet for our trophies going in.
That's, that's positive, thank you. All right, up next, you have the minutes, you have the minutes from the budget committee. We will talk about the budget a little bit later tonight, but any questions on anything that you saw on the budget committee minutes? Attempts to answer? All right, next thing we have E I C committee. Let's see. Co-curricular, which would you like to?
Well, I, I mean, essentially, we went over what is happening here tonight.
Oh, okay, okay, then, all right. Yeah, okay, this one, oh, this looks familiar.
They were my pets.
We were.
Beautiful.
We were our guinea pigs.
All right, there we go.
I loved it, I said, bring it forward.
All right, awesome. All right, well, that takes care of that. Communications committee meeting, want to talk to that?
Yeah, so we, we met, it seems like forever ago, but it was like last week. You've got those, we've got those minutes there. We basically talked about policy the whole time. So you can see the notes on that. You'll see, I can't remember if we brought any of those policies tonight. We've got a couple of first readings, but I don't think that they're the ones that we worked on last week. So you'll see more policy in the future, in the future. It'll be foreboding, yes. So, yeah, we have another meeting in, in February.
All righty. Okay, any questions on that, communications? All right, finance facilities. Bruce, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm going to make you stay here for another couple hours while I go over this. No, I'm going to make it, so I got a written report here. We go to the facilities real quick and that goes over that, didn't have much to go over on. And we just fly through the finance and C I P, we audit the budget and contracted services and there's really not a lot going on. Transportation, I got an update from, I got from transportation actually, because I was doing a game Saturday at K S H High School and he's hired, I don't know if the manager's got it in, maybe she does. He's hired two more bus drivers and got an extra one for Massoma, I found out. I passed on it in this report, because we just found out on Saturday. Other than that, not much else in the draft. We haven't got anything else to break up.
We might, we might see some traction on drivers.
Yeah, that's the other thing, yeah, drivers. We don't have any policies, but I really, I love, I love policies, but you all know them.
That's right.
So, yeah, we don't have any stuff, we're good.
Yeah, we might see some traction on drivers, hopefully by the spring. So things are moving finally at the state level that was being held up, so.
Yeah, you see two, two vans sitting down the facility.
Yeah, I saw one of those vans. So the two vans have finally arrived, the ones that we ordered. And finally, so we'll be able to use those for student transportation, but not for bus, instead of bus routes, like for daily transportation, but we'll be able to take teams and clubs, you know, smaller ones where they'll take, send a team, like a whole, you know, team can take the two vans. So that will help with our, our buses, you know, having to pull them for athletic and practice school events and things like that, so.
Is that recent?
They're going to get them lettered and all that sort of thing, so. All right, up next, superintendent's report.
Well, you do have my written report in your packet, but before we go over that, I would ask that you dismiss Lily. She does have something to attend this evening.
All right. By all means, Lily, go ahead, thank you so much.
I'd like to stand up and give her a applause. I think you're the greatest and I probably not, well, I know I won't be the next one because I'll be up there representing that.
All right.
Thanks, Lily.
Thank you, Lily.
All right, you're good.
So in my written report, you do see a little piece written by Ann Duddy as she talks about the National Honor Society and the food drive and the food baskets that they did put together. We'll let Mr. Kylie know that we too, at the district, are a little bit disappointed in the response that we have received from parents. We put that out in the district newsletter, only had about seventeen responses from that. So then we pushed it out to parents and we do fully intend to push it out one more time to parents.
I got a text saying, I got, I've gotten texts, yeah, Thanksgiving.
So we do fully intend to push it out yet again. I'm just not sure why we are not getting the response that we have in previous years. Because there have been three years I put it in the district letter and the next thing you know, it's full, over capacity. So I'm not sure why we're not getting that response, but we are working on it. Next, we'd like to congratulate the Cannon Elementary School and Megan Prince. Unfortunately, my picture of her in her turkey costume did not make it here. They did win the food drive and she did and was so gracious as to dress up as the turkey for that little event. Congratulations to the Enfield Village School. You'll see a little excerpt there that was sent to the Valley News. I do not think they have picked it up yet. But once again, for the second year, they're recognized as one of the top elementary schools in the state by U S World and News and World Report. So that's the little piece that we did, we are trying to publicize that. But, you know, we're not really ever sure what the Valley News will print for us. Snow season is here, so as a reminder to parents and kids that we will have two traditional snow days this year so that the magic of the snow day can be lived. After that, we will move on to remote learning or remote snow days. There's certain parameter, most people are very familiar with how we run those now, different limits or different expectations for different grade levels. So those pieces are in place and that's to get us out before the third week in June. This year, you know, graduation is on the thirteenth, the last day of school is on the sixteenth. So you run two snow days, throw in June, tenth, and you're looking at, you know, the week of the twenty-third-ish somewhere there.
Nobody likes that.
And no one wants to be in school that week in June. So that is all I have for my report.
All right, questions for Amanda on her report?
So I asked to be the bad guy on this whole group, as I usually am. So if you get in a bind, can you, you don't want to go on a Saturday morning deal?
No, that's what the remote dates are for. So as long as I can incorporate remote dates after two traditional snow days, we should get out before the last week or second or, you know, third weekend.
You always, you always get the, you always get that from the state that, that, what do they call it? What am I, I'm missing something?
The change to hours instead of days?
No, they can, they can, they get a waiver, that's exactly what I'm looking for, a waiver. You get the waiver if you need it, so.
Yeah, if we need to.
All right.
Cool. All right, business administrator's report, you have financiers in your packet there. Anything else to add to that, Michelle?
My report just states that your financials are in there, the budget's in there, default budget, Warren Articles minus the support staff negotiations because those are still ongoing. And the vans, I had the vans in my other.
Oh, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder too, sorry. I'm so upset. We've all been very excited about the vans, we've stolen Michelle's thunder a few times. Sorry. Any questions for Michelle?
I'm doing a good job too. I don't want to take the thunder out of just being over there with her, but you're doing a great job too.
Any updates or changes to the bus routes for this? We have a standing, uh, standing menu, standing agenda item for bus route updates. Did we have any changes proposed assigned?
We did not.
Okay. All right.
Gave you, gave you a change.
That's right, well, we'll see when that comes down.
He, he gave you a low down on Saturday morning, it was like his stuff.
All right, so we got quarterly reports from C E S, E B S, I R S, the high school, special eleven, technology. Who would like to go first?
I'm going first.
Thank you, Tina, all right.
I was going to say, one, one loses the balance away.
All right, take it away, Tina.
So I'm going to lead off, I'm going to introduce members, Ann, the advisor of the Royal Review. Come on up, Chris. And Mr. May.
I just grabbed a couple of them.
Do you want to explain what you, what it is?
Yeah, do you know what this is? Art Club and Writers Guild collaborated to create the Royal Review, which is a magazine showcasing students' art and writing pieces, giving them a chance to publish their work for students and faculty. You want to use the next outline or do you want me to do it?
I'll leave this here.
So we founded Writers Guild and myself from here to twenty twenty-three, it's very new. Mr. May did use to do a literature magazine. We ended up collaborating with Art Club, which is Miss French's club, to run a little bit longer. And we added art to it, so there's about nineteen works in total, about split evenly between the two clubs. And it's all different people that put in like short stories, poems, sketching and painting and graphic art.
Yeah, one of the coolest parts, I think, is that we managed to have people in Art Club create art pieces to match the writing that we made in Writers Guild and by yourself. So like if you, we'll, we have to remember that. You flip through, then you'll see that there's writing that corresponds with an art piece that another student did, so it all matches up.
So we have copies here for each of you, I'll leave some extra copies on the library desk. Here we go. What Aaliyah failed to mention is that she is the sole editor of the whole magazine. So all of these pieces, she was the one who compiled them into what you're going to see today. This was all possible thanks to experience in the arts. We got a good grant from them, we're very thankful for, and we're looking forward to the next issue, so. So much.
This is Fox. The one thing I was going to, I was saying at Atlanta the ride over is I was recommending that you get a copy of these into all the public libraries and all the five towns, so that way, because people in the community love reading what you all are writing and it's like creating for art, so absolutely talk to librarians, so anyway, go ahead.
I would like to recognize Mr. May for sort of like gathering the group, leading the group as an adult advisor. The student leaders you have in front of you, their stories are exceptional. The piece that you're going to, this is really, when Ellen got my desk and they presented, I was just getting, because I hadn't had any pieces of seeing it ahead of time. So it's really, it's really kudos to all the students and Mr. May and all the support, experience in the arts. So thank you, I really enjoy it.
And check out her monthly newsletter, Other Pieces by them.
That's right, I've seen that. Kathleen had a question for Gil.
Yes, I'm curious, you've got a very attractive book here and I was wondering how much did you do on the publishing and all that? Did you do this yourself or did you have a company that did this?
So we worked with Mixon Printing and it was kind of a combined effort between Mr. May, I and Mrs. French. We met, I think, about three times over the past couple of months to kind of like talk about what we wanted to be copying, whatever. And then they ended up doing it, they like showed us what we would have. And it was, it's like a great, nice binding, a great deal. So we ended up going through that instead of doing that on self-printing.
I would also make sure to send a copy to the Burn Foundation because they are, they are the experience in the arts. They would want to put that together, so they'd love to see this, absolutely.
Fantastic.
Let's get you a home, you know what?
Well, I just grabbed it off the desk over there, so I got a little prop. They're going to, they're going to give us a check out. Thank you, everybody. All right, Tina, go ahead.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. So in my quarterly report, building goals, we continue with moving forward with three of the same goals as in the past. And then this year, we brought in two goals, especially if we look at the E S process and really looking at innovative structural practices to improve student engagement along with overall health and wellness, are being this year's pathway to wellness. So that's a great opportunity to connect. So you do have my S A T data and what like April had mentioned, we have a data team that really looked at trends in the past and as you saw the cohorts traveling through, we saw that same trend. This, this next cohort coming through, we've already focused on their data, they're, you know, they should be outperforming last year's group. We've also added a bunch of interventions. We're also looking at cuspers, so students, juniors that may be looking at maybe off the P S A T that need a little bit more to meet in the Christian category, they're getting with a tutor. Those have all been individually identified, looking at making the schedule work. So really, you know, focusing on the students' needs and where they're at and really bringing those scores to fruition along with just our curriculum alignment as a whole. As far as new initiatives, we had a busy fall. The Wellness Fair, Future Opportunities Fair, they were really live community engagement. I thank friends of Massoma for, and Bridget for really supporting us with the Future Opportunities Fair. Raised in so many companies and opportunities for students. The Wellness Fair really was also very successful and of course, every student loves all the candy and the food that gets handed out at these events. It's sort of, they go through five or six times, it's okay, they can have the food. We have the E S on October seventeenth, we had Carl Jostington from the E S. He spoke with Mr. Simula and myself. He also spoke with our steering committee along with the staff. On that day, really setting expectations. There'll be surveys going out the month of January, that's the first part of our self-reflection process. We will complete our self-reflection process in the building and then move forward the collaborative conferences in October. So we have a part to take care of first. Communication is something that we have really been working, hey, really getting more information out. Parents, every single Sunday, you get a week at a glance, which is all of the club information, what's happening for that week. It's also like a flyer goes out. I send it out on Sunday at some point in the day when I finish it and within an hour, I turn it to you. It goes out to families, students and staff. Staff also has their own week at a glance, plus on top of that, there was a report. But we've really been working hard at, you know, letting people know what's going on. There's a lot that goes on. And then community involvement, you know, Interact Club, really successful, they're a great group. They connected with Love and Interact Club, they all came here. The National Honor Society, that was just an amazing food drive supported by all of the buildings. The food did come to fill our food pantry and there was leftover. Um, the food did come to fill our food pantry and there was leftovers. Like there was so much food collected. We were able to feed more families. So that is in the food pantry. Um, of course, I just want to mention, um, lastly, that we did take, send four teams to the state championship this year. Um, I was at, I was at all of them, um, cross-country. It was an exceptional day, um, to see those seniors, um, take care of that. Um, soccer, I was there. I was there. It was great. Um, it was so great to take those guys on the bus to elementary schools. Um, you know, that was just, and thank you to the principals for welcoming us and pom poms and songs. Um, you know, that's just a testament to the community. Um, these students wouldn't be where they're at without the community support. Um, and it was, it was a blast. It was super great time. I, the fall production, just a lot going on all the time. And when you talk about our, our activity, it's our students, they're involved. So.
Cool. One other thing that, it's because my kid's doing it on Christmas in Canaan, uh, this weekend on Saturday night. Uh, students from the music department are gonna be playing and singing music at Canaan Elementary while Jason Jarvis does stuff with art as well. So come on down. Anyway, any questions for Tina?
And earlier, and earlier that day, also, also on Saturday,
More stuff?
The, uh, the high school basketball team will be welcoming K through six students, uh, for, um, youth phonics.
Look at that. There's so much stuff, Tina. We have more stuff.
Well, I gotta be careful with like.
I know.
We have hosting a, a jamboree, uh, after Christmas here, so.
It's awesome. It's a very, very.
Awesome, right?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's awesome. Yeah.
Probably needs to communicate a lot.
Well, my, one of my comments is it's, it amazes me, this is a small district to some degree, how much is going on. You know, with the amount of kids and, you know, input, and I think that's wonderful. Um, the, can you just for the, put it out there, what NEASK means and what it is?
So that's our accrediting. Um, it's a 10-year process. Um, you know, it's something that we work for. Every year we have reports we have to file. It's really our accreditation. Um, so that is, you know, we, every year it's funded. So they will come in. We have an initial meeting next year, collaborative conference, where people come and they kind of look at our stuff. And then later on, they come, um, the following year, and that is our big process. Um, but fortunately, the process has changed with NEASK. It's not the gotcha of these major reports that have happened in the past. Really, they want to look at school improvement. Wherever you're at, how would we get better? And that's what's really exciting about, like in the past, you had, they had these massive reports and it kind of like separated from, from the school. But now it's really a collaborative grouping of the staff and, you know, what those expectations are and how we can just be better. Um, and, you know, looking at what are our practices that really could be innovative, but we just live them. But, you know, sharing that out from the perspective of other people coming and saying, yeah, we're doing that right. So I, I, we have a great group. I mean, we couldn't do all we do without the support of staff, people going over and above. Um, the community members, like our steering committee for NEASK. So, um, whether it's athletics or clubs or it's people in the building in the community that make all these things happen. Mr. May?
Yeah. Cool. Any other questions for Tina?
I got a, no, I got a comment. I just, I'm glad you, you got spectator buses for all the sports events. I'm glad you have them in all those championship ones and the semifinals and the finals. Uh, I don't know, did the football team ever get the escort they wanted coming from Canaan?
There was a fire in the.
There was a fire. There was a fire that day. That's why they weren't, they weren't ready, ready to go when they, they won the championship.
And those fan, those spectator buses, um, for soccer, Royal Athletic Booster sponsored those. So students, if you rode those booster bus, you rode those spectator buses, those students' entry was paid. And the same thing for the football boosters. Students that rode that spectator bus, their entry was paid as well. So that was two buses for, you know, for soccer. Uh, so and that's really, the students that were able to just pay are, are students that might not have been able to. So it was really great to have them, you know.
It's a big thing. It's a big thing.
It's a long ways away too.
It's a big thing. When they, you know, the basketball team last year went to the finals down there. It's a big, it's a big, big, big event.
Yeah.
And, you know, and the other part we really do need to consider is that that wouldn't have happened, couldn't have got there without father's foster dating, all those classes.
That's right.
So we're appreciative of that. They've always stepped up along with the boosters and those other organizations to donate those buses.
That's right.
Yeah, you'll, you'll still get that because I hammered him sadly. I, no, I didn't hammer him. He knows. He saw him. He knows. You know.
We're thankful.
He's good. He's very, he's been, you know, he doesn't want to see me at these meetings. That's why he told me. I don't, he doesn't, he doesn't want to be at these meetings, put it that way.
All right. All right. Anything else for Tina?
Yeah.
Okay. Who would, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I hate the infield one. The other one's on the side, I think.
Or just Megan, or Jamie? Megan, Jamie, Chris, Craig?
Kevin is out sick today.
Okay.
He's not in here.
Kevin Sick.
I guess I'm next.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, good to see everybody. We, I, you have my report. I put in there the goals that have been sort of in place for a while. Um, our staff has just completed the update of our vision statement, which I would love to share with you as soon as it goes public within the building. I don't want to share it with you guys before I share it with everybody at school. Um, but they worked really hard to really create a vision that means more to what we are currently doing. Um, so I'm excited for that. And we're gonna use that to build our, the, the new goals moving forward. So that'll come sort of after the first of the year. So we're excited about that. Um, in my report, you see the spring 23 to 24 math and reading data. Um, you'll notice that we are continuing to make gains, which is really exciting. We are improving and perfecting our wind block this year. Last year, as you know, was a sort of a pilot for us. It was the beginning of what that process was gonna look like. We are seeing, um, global increases in our ability to have students to know how to sound out words, decode words, and read, uh, which is pretty awesome. And as a matter of fact, I worked, um, with Dr. Nancy Breitman earlier this last week, um, to, to talk about some of that. And even in our evaluation processes for students that are being identified for special education, we are finding that students do not leave phonics as part of their IEPs, even if they are identified. Many students are not being identified because of the work that we're doing globally in the building. So we are seeing a vast improvement in our students' ability to, to read and use those skills. So that's really exciting. Um, we are working strongly with an MTSSB team this year, which is multi-tiered systems of support for behavior. I know you heard Tina talk about that a lot. Um, we have focused on global, uh, sort of expectations. Hallway behavior, uh, playground behavior, being respectful to staff and students, uh, throughout the building and that sort of thing. We've had two celebrations. One was on Halloween. Uh, we don't typically wear costumes, but we always do some sort of a spirit day. Um, and the kids were able to do what they needed to do. And we had sort of a dance party outside on the playground with the whole school and popsicles donated by the PTA and stuff like that. So it was really great. We are currently working on, um, responding to greetings in the morning. So if a student gets greeted by an adult and they say, "Good morning, Mrs. Liddy," when you walk by, they get a sticker. The sticker is currently an ugly sweater. Um, the ugly sweater is going on, an ugly sweater on our turkey, which is on the wall. Um, and then next week, we hope to celebrate with them again because they basically filled the turkey with ugly sweaters, which is kind of a cool little thing. They really love it. The first round, we had gumballs. Um, and so all the staff had, uh, paper gumballs. And the kids were able to put the gumballs on the, in the gumball machine that was on the wall, which was really exciting for them. They thought it was very cool.
Whatever.
And you know, right?
I would, I would have wanted the gumballs.
Yeah, we're looking at like please and thank you and yes, please and no, thank you instead of just, no, I don't want that. Um, we're working on, you know, one of the things we're talking about next time is we share everything except for germs. So not being prompted to wash your hands after you sneeze and those kinds of things. So we're looking at sort of global things that are just gonna be good community builders. So we're really excited about that. Um, we have received gingerbread houses for every classroom, uh, donated to us. Uh, Dawn actually brought them for us, uh, for Enfield hometown holidays. And every classroom decorates a gingerbread house. On Friday, Dawn will come and pick them up and they will just be displayed, um, in the, in the next event. There's some coloring pages that are happening and I believe that they put them up at the Enfield House of Pizza, I think. I'm not exactly sure. But they show up with all the supplies. We hand them out to the staff. Uh, we have a couple, we have one staff member who, um, uses a hoggoon gun to build the structure. The structures of all the houses go back to that classroom and the kids create them and they get picked up and displayed during the, during that hometown holidays event. Um, we have our public librarian comes into school every week and she reads with different classes. So she's still, even though the library is under construction and things are moving and all of those things. We used to walk to the town library every week. Now she's coming to us. So we're still being able to do some of that work, which is great. Um, once again, in October, we had our fire safety day. We had firefighters in the building all day long. Students participated in their, uh, fire prevention poster contest. The winners all got to ride to the school on fire trucks. We had a big assembly out on the playground. Um, and then firefighters were in classrooms all day long. During the big lunch recesses, they did a touch truck event once again. So all of the students got to climb in and on fire trucks and police cars, um, which was a great event. They really enjoyed that. That's kind of amazing.
Cool. All right. Any questions for Jamie?
And we'd love to see the high schoolers come in, by the way. That was really fun. We had, uh, purple and gold pom poms. So every kid in every hallway and every adult had pom poms. We were shaking it. We played, we have the champions on the.
All right.
Our head and the whole. So we love that kind of stuff.
We'll save it for the next, uh, sport because I'm sure they'll, they'll be back.
Oh, yeah. For sure.
Yeah.
Uh, Jamie, I noticed that the PTA is soliciting, um, some feedback testimonials to help support the upcoming application for the New Hampshire School of Excellence Award. Is that something that, um, that you'd like us as school board members to also do? Okay.
Yes, um, it was highly recommended to me based on being a second year in a row in, uh, one of the top elementary schools to apply for the New Hampshire ed. Um, and essentially what I have to do is there's, there's a, um, it's, I think it's on their Facebook page is the link. But I could also get it to you guys, um, where they created sort of a, um, a Google form that just asked for a couple of questions, uh, that just talks about the New Hampshire competencies that they're looking for. From that, I have to create, um, an essay. Uh, the staff is also completing the same thing. I have parents doing it. We also have a group of students that we're gonna work with to get some feedback from them as well. If we are selected as a finalist, um, in February-ish, I believe, they will send a team out to the school and they'll want to hear from community members and parents and students and staff, um, to sort of talk about some of the, the things that are in the essay. So I'm totally open to anybody's feedback. Um, I'm not big on just, I can toot our horn all day long. I think the school's great and the community's been phenomenal. Um, but it's really nice to be able to put some stuff in there. Um, and I also send a weekly email to my staff. Um, and I'm selecting some of the feedback, feedback quotes that we're getting from here and putting it out to the staff too, so that they can hear what everybody else thinks.
That's great. Thank you. I'll, I know that, uh, Molly Finkler from the PTA has sent out a message on the Enfield blister. So I'll forward that to Amanda and she can send it out to the board, uh, in case they want to.
Good. Vanessa, you need to put the board on that end. Let us know.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
Any other questions for Jamie? All right. Great. Thank you. All right. Who would like to go next? Megan, all right.
The gentlemen are very chivalrous.
They've got, yeah, they've got a way.
How you feeling? Settling in?
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's going really well. Um, so the three goals that you see here are the goals that we've had for the last few years. Um, my hope is that, um, as we get towards the end of the year, we'll work on maybe either trading out some of them or working, um, to, um, either, you can do them all. Um, but, um, as you can see, I have the test scores there. Um, one of the new initiatives that we started this year was WIN. Enfield started it last year. It's kind of helped us to, you know, work out, you know, some of the kinks and stuff for us. The having them, had, had done that, um, last year. So we are working with the 30-minute tier two, um, reading. We have reading specialists, special ed, regular teachers, all working together, um, to, um, divide groups for phonetic awareness, um, letter concept, letter formations, things like that. Um, we also have, um, implemented, uh, an SCL initiative where we have, every two weeks, we have a new word. Kindness, integrity, humility. We teach some of these big words. Um, we do morning announcements where we, um, we talk about the word, we ask questions, and then the class, um, once the kids hang up and they, and the kids do it themselves, the morning announcements. And they'll talk about humility, for instance, and then ask the classes to discuss like maybe a scenario or something. There's like a question of the day that goes along with the word. Um, and so, um, everybody's kind of trained now. We do the pledge and then there's to wait because there's a, a word and there's an activity. And then they do as part of their morning meeting and greeting, they use the word for that. And so, um, because we're almost done with our sixth word, we're having an initiative come up, pop in the spirit. We have this big popcorn machine and if the kids are, are caught using one of our words or doing an action that describes one of our words, they get a piece of popcorn and the popcorn goes, they can put the popcorn in the popcorn machine and when if it's full, we're gonna have a big, um, popcorn fun party thing. So. Um, but we have a word and we're also, um, in January, each class is going to review a word at an assembly. So we'll have like four words every assembly. They can do it through a poem. They can do it through, um, a play. They can do it through, like at like about five minutes each to kind of review the word. So the words are like never going away. We just constantly use them in our vocabulary day to day. Um, we also have had, um, the National Honor Society has come every month to read to our preschoolers. Um, that's been fun to see them in our building. And because of the food drive, um, our school did 500 pounds of food. Um, and so the, this Friday, uh, they're coming at one to play basketball, um, with our kids. Um, so they're excited to be able to read some of the rewards for, um, collecting. And so, and I did, yes, dressed as a turkey. Um, I was the horse for homecoming, turkey for Thanksgiving. And last week I did L for the holidays of tactics. So.
You're putting yourself out there.
My wardrobe is compact. So.
I missed all that. Get that memo on that.
I know. I, uh, I did a slideshow in the end, had all my different outfits. So I plan to keep going. Um, we're also, uh, Vince has been coming in, um, to do, um, science, um, different science units with different grade levels coming on it. Um, we're hopefully, um, April has put together a thing with the Monshire Museum for some more science-based stuff that almost the entire staff signed up for, I believe. So, yeah. Um, I'm also getting together with Tina to hopefully come up with a way that the high schoolers can come and kind of adopt a class in a sense and do some more scheme activities. The high schoolers and, you know, second and third grade were really interested in that. So, um, getting them kind of come down to our school and do more activities, um, with them. Um, and besides, in the community, we are, um, really stressing and emphasizing community this year. Um, we did, the food drive was the first thing. In, uh, January, February, we're gonna do some sort of other. Um, we haven't quite decided as a staff, but there's a couple of things floating out there, but food type drive again, um, just because it's winter. But in the spring, we're going to have a community day where, um, we're hoping that we can just, and then one, we're gonna pick one day and the whole school just goes out into the community and to local Canaan and does things for rail trail, plant flowers on the green, uh, rake our trails, um, uh, do things for our school, do things for the community. I've already, um, spoken to many Canaan community members, um, who have kind of got their, you know, brains, yeah, working on things that we can do with the kids and how we can divide them up and, and do some community service. So. Um, so we're really trying to get out into the community. We also have the, um, senior center. Once a month, each class goes to the senior center. We've had two now where they go and they make a decoration for the senior center. Um, like this month, Ms. Myers' class went and they made little Christmas tree table toppers. And then, um, a child picks, um, an adult and they read to them or, um, do an activity within the library. So. So we're really trying to get out there, um, into the community as much as we can.
Awesome. Um, for the community day in the spring, connect with the Interact Club because they will definitely help, uh, from the high schoolers. That's another good way to cross collaborate and have a few more supervisions, a few more people, a few more, uh, older kids helping.
Yeah.
Um, any questions for Megan? Awesome. Cool. Thank you. Sounds like it's fun over there. All right.
It draws straws. These.
Yeah, draws straws.
I draw three, uh, paper scissors.
All right, Chris, you got, you got. All right.
Operating, but.
Yeah.
Um, so Q1 for special ed is, uh, for us is, is really basically it's, there's a lot of professional development. We have so many indicators that the, that the DOE is dipping on us and pulling out our data from every single year that it, we're, we're compliance driven for, with special ed. So we have a lot of professional development that is organized on, on a regional basis, um, with our other, um, other school districts. Uh, we get together, we offer professional development. Most of the time it's offered at a curbside professional development center on various topics. Um, so I was just gonna step through some of the things that we had organized through Q1 this year. Um, we've had a, um, special ed preschool group that has met a couple of times. Um, this group has also met with the DOE in Concord. And there's a couple of things that are happening with preschool this year. Every district in the state. Every district in the state of New Hampshire, their accountability tool that that the DOE uses to sort of check on preschool for our special ed kids has been two things. It's called POMs and TS Gold. Those are two offerings. Those have gone away. And so everybody in the state now has to use a system called the DROP system. And it's been a little bit of a painful rollout in terms of how it works, the mechanism, collecting the data. And I do want to say a big thanks to our preschool coordinator, Lisa Nevens, because when we did go to the statewide training, Mascomma was sort of leading the charge, we had all of our data in. So there were lots of districts who hadn't even started the process yet. And I was pretty excited about when they went down the list and like Mascomma was all set. So I was pretty happy about that. A couple of other things that are happening. Indicator 13 happens every year now. And Indicator 13 is, it's a high school and the DOE is checking on transition goals in 11th and 12th grade, kids who are getting ready to sort of exit out of the system. And so what the DOE will do is they will send us a subset of, you know, 10 SAC numbers for 10 different kids who are over here. And then we get to choose the files that we pick. And then we go through each of those IEPs and then have to take those in turn, make sure that we have all of the data necessary. And then we have to upload that into NESSIS. And then that goes to the DOE and then they do sort of a data check on it. And then we get a report back on that. That happens every fall. That's pretty labor-intensive. So, you know, props to Danielle, my administrative assistant, who helps out a lot with that. Jeff McLean, the special ed coordinator at the high school. Lori Sandborn, one of the case managers. And working with the other newer case managers on that process. Case Management Academy, that is a series of all-day trainings for new case managers coming in. They will meet three times throughout the year at the Kierzach Professional Development Center with one of our trainers on a regional basis. I think we have met two or three times already. I think that there's one more training to happen. And we also have LEA training. So this year, LEA training. So LEA means Local Education Agency. So when a special ed meeting happens, there's sort of like, who is the, I guess, the person sort of in charge of, who is the person who is the, what we call the LEA of the meeting? Who is sort of the administrator overseeing the special ed process for any kind of a special ed meeting? They are the person who has been authorized by the school district to allocate resources and funds. So it's a very important, very important piece that is run in all of the buildings. So anybody that's new coming in, Megan Prince went to the, went to the training. Ryan, the assistant principal from IRS. So what we like to do is not have people be LEAs in meetings until after they have gone through that training. So you have been anointed and you may, you may. And when we tell LEAs, when you're LEA in the meeting and things get, you know, a little bit dicey and you're not sure, it's okay to sort of say, you know what, I need to ask Chris or I need to, you know, connect with Monica or Jeff on this and for a little bit of that, that's okay. Kidder Law Conference, I was able to go to the Kidder Law Conference with Amanda this year. That is always a well, well-attended. This year, the big hot topic was the new Title IX regulations and re-reading the Title IX coordinator. I sat in on anything that was Title IX. I sat in on. And then other professional development, the ongoing stuff that we're, you know, we're part of the Medicaid to Schools program. So we're always, you know, trying to work with our service providers on how to log things correctly so we can build for it if it is something that is reversible for the school district. Transportation, as we know, transportation is out here in Little Rock, New Hampshire, can be extremely difficult. So any runs that Butler cannot do for us in terms of any of our out-of-district kids, we do have a couple of runs that are being done by door-to-door out of Lebanon. And then ongoing challenges for us. Industry-wide shortages continue to plague us, hamper us, annoy us. So we, you know, we're always trying to work through that. You know, one of the things this year is having, for the first time, to move to remote case managers, which is, you know, a couple of years ago when we were in the thick of COVID, in-person SLPs started to sort of go away. And we had to move toward a, you know, an online model with SLPs. And that's starting to happen in more and more different areas, not only for us, but across the state. It is definitely an issue. And then the out-of-district stuff is always, it's always bumpy. It's, you know, it's, the pendulum swings this way and the pendulum swings the other way. Right now, we've lost, you know, one of the kids that we had at the beginning of the year who was in the out-of-district placement, moved to a different district. So they come off of our roles. So I don't get too happy about that anymore because I know right around the corner
the corner's another one.
probably somebody else that's going to be, you know, going to be moving in.
Then the other one you had here is that it says one was in out-of-district, but they recently returned. So that means that we're able to provide their services here. So awesome.
Exactly. So we were able to bring them back and they're being served through the schools.
And that added benefit of being in the community where they lived, which is the best part.
Which is the best part.
Yeah. Cool. Any questions for Chris?
You mentioned reimbursement for the possible services billing for the reimbursement on services provided.
For Medicaid schools?
Yes.
Yes.
And so I'm just curious, is that a substantial amount of revenue that comes in or otherwise?
It's not. It used to be a little bit, but the whole Medicaid to Schools program, they have, they continue to make it more and more difficult to bill. And one of the things that, so there are two, there are a couple of different companies that are. One, the company that we use to sort of bill our stuff through is called MSB. And there have been some issues across the state with that whole system and the ability to sort of get things in correctly and then move them to a billing status and sort of recruit that money. It's not a whole lot of money anymore. And we've often talked in our directors group on whether it's even worth it to be in the Medicaid to Schools program anymore because the amount of time that it takes for service providers such as schools, you know, anybody, it could be Paris, it could be OT, it could be speech. Anybody having to sort of log in that time. The cost to do that is almost getting to a point where it's not even worth the revenue that we're getting back. If you'd like a specific number, I can get you that for the next meeting though.
I know, but we've got a state rep sitting here and I think he needs to hear this.
He's listening.
Because, you know, it's disheartening to see how difficult it is when the state shouldn't be putting that many hurdles in our way. How many other schools use the MSB?
So a big shift this year? Yeah, that's a great, great question. So a big shift this year is as more districts have ended their contracts with MSB, they have moved to another vendor called Relay. And we just had a reading last Friday within our region. And we sort of pulled, like, there were a couple of districts. One in particular, Lebanon, has moved to Relay. And it's been a little bit of a painful transition. But they've also had a transition in directors over there as well. So, but it's been a little bit of a painful transition. Kierzach has also moved to Relay and they seem to be doing okay with it. Canover, they don't use anybody. They bill on their own. But they bill only, you know, a small, you know, a small amount.
They've got deeper pockets than we do, so every penny counts here. Yeah.
But the rules for Medicaid to Schools is becoming more and more, it can be painful.
It's sad to hear that. Thank you for the information.
Yeah. Any other questions for Chris?
I have the Medicaid reimbursement. For FY24, we received 71,000.
Say again.
71,000 for Medicaid. We voted at 95. So we did receive less than we anticipated.
Yeah, that's disappointing.
Yeah. Alright, cool. Thank you. Who do you have?
No, I'm just, I'm always mulling over this. The out-of-district placement is what can be done at a state level or, you know, just your thoughts on it or if there's anything, you know, changes or.
Money from the state would be great. That's all I can say.
Taxpayer money.
Yeah, so the special ed aid is another painful. And that seems like even next year it's going to be worse. I forget what the total number was. It was 80, it was 80 million? I think it was 80, maybe, I think it was 80 million. It's 80 million across the state. And I would really want to get a number. So don't pull me on the 80 million, but it was a large number. And they started to drill into where that deficit, what was making up that number? And they're not quite done sort of analyzing it. But the initial information that I got was about half of it is because we moved from having to be responsible for kids. It used to be when they turned 21, they would exit out. Now they're 22. So we're saying about, I have heard that about half of the deficit is because of the move to 22. The other half of it is just the sheer fact that things are costing so much more in special ed. Speech and language. Anything special ed related over the past few years has gotten much more expensive. And so that's what they're saying. The other half of that is due to just the cost of things, cost of doing business now.
So just so you, special ed aid, FY24, we received 634,000. This year, estimate 230,000.
230,000.
230,000, 630,000.
220,000, actually.
220,000.
How can the schools be expected to absorb that? It's just, it blows my mind.
Great question.
Painful.
Yeah, very.
And we're fortunate that we've built a budget in the way that we do. So we're not, we're, you know, what we receive is what we receive and it helps not to fill a gap, but to provide that, just additional funding source and not one that we have anticipated and already spent.
Right.
Other districts do it the other way. We're lucky. We don't build our budget. And that way, other districts, when they build their budget, they're building it counting on that revenue to come in. And those are the ones who are really hurting at this point.
Something about kind of chickens where they're hatched and that, right? So, well, thank you. Cool. Alright, thank Chris. Craig, I guess that is.
Yeah. So, you know, the tech support's never riveting at the elementary school.
What costume did you have?
It's like Area 465 or whatever. So I only need about 20 minutes of you guys' time. I should be done in a quarter of eight.
It's a hockey game tonight.
It's like five minutes, right? No, I got much less than that. So it's like, so you've kind of heard, like, everything and Hope kind of says, like, there's so much going on. And even though mine isn't as riveting, I am going to hold you to something. And I might steal a little bit of Kamala's sest on it, but I can say something about it before I'm done. But you hear everybody says, you bring the remote clinicians. We do tele-speech. We do telehealth. We get tele-courses. You know, we're supporting distance learning labs, V-Lax, online courses. The landscape for tech support has broadened, which has also created, you know, greater security vectors and protection. So there's more mitigation, more vulnerabilities, more workflows that we're supporting. And it's been quite challenging, especially the first month or so. Managed to get through a lot of it. And, you know, it dawned on me while we were sitting here, it's like, and maybe this is even true for some kids. I mean, you may have a student that comes to school for a second, jumps into a V-Lax course or two, goes to distance learning lab, maybe he's in an online course somewhere, and then jumps on a bus and goes to the Hartford. I mean, this is how it's changed. This is here. This is real. This is the way schools are shaping themselves. And tech is keeping up so far. So I just want to press upon that from the report. You know, I'm still going through a couple of different audits. We had more security audits just to keep measuring where we're at. You know, still the mental health thing. We got software that helps detect, you know, toxic behavior, self-harm. And those reports are sent right to the administrators as soon as those happen. And we continue to just keep trying to absorb the different, you know, functions. The latest challenge is, it was weird, kind of all in one week, a lot of support for diabetic pumps that need to connect and, you know, whatever readings they get that come through. And, you know, so we had to open up certain accesses for those. So, you know, the tech, like everybody else and everything else, is changing with dynamic landscape. What really changed, what was really cool the other day, and Kamala can jump in on this if she wants to, but I know they'll do something hopefully in this group and in another group. You know, they presented at the McAuliffe Technology Conference there in Nashua. And I'm just going to sum it up like this. They did a great job. And when you have people, and a couple of them, I haven't been in the state that long, but I've seen some superintendents and I know they're kind of retired. And I don't know what they might be doing now, but I know they were in there. It seems like the longer you go to these conferences, the older people get to it. It's funny to see that. But when they comment, and Kamala can elaborate, is when somebody says, you guys have something special going on there, you know, as it related to the AV stuff that the students are doing. I thought that was a pretty high compliment for that whole AV and technology kind of. And so that kind of summed up to me a lot of where we're at as we kind of go into the half-year of school as a successful kind of thing. And I don't know if you want to add, you presented as well. A lot of people came up to you guys asking for notes and autographs and information.
They gave out so many QR codes. The kids are great. Seth and I brought three students from the AV club to the Chris McAuliffe Technology Conference. And usually that's not a place for students. But we felt that what, it's usually it's where administrators and tech directors present about beautiful things going on in the district and teach other teachers and technology directors about how to use tech in the classroom to make their environment better. And Seth and I and our AV, like, the AV kids heard about it and they're like, well, we do that. And so Seth wrote them a letter and immediately they wrote us back and wanted us to come and bring kids. And so we brought kids. And so instead of adults presenting to other adults about what they have going on in the classroom to make the teaching environment in their school better, we brought kids. And our kids presented and talked about, you know, what they did and what they bring to the school district. And so the kids talked about individually, like, not just how they've grown personally and how it benefited them, but how what they're learning is benefiting their environment around them. And then I'm in a really unique position that I benefit. I can see how what our AV club does benefits not just the students and not just the high school, like most clubs, but they benefit every school in our district. They benefit the district as a whole and they benefit our community because of what they're able to create and what they're able to put out there. And so it was just, it was really remarkable to be able to go and tell other people about what we have going on and about the support that we have from our technology director and from our department and from our schools. And then, you know, about the great work that the kids are doing. And like, there was a woman who was crying. Joe was very impressed with herself. Technology directors, there was a director who was on the, one of the, they put together, I know, so good. I was super excited. So they put together a video, you know, a short one about all the things our AV club does because it's not just AV. And you guys all know this. I don't have to give you the speech. Actually, the kids are going to give it to the Community Engagements Committee at our next meeting. So you'll hear it all. But they showed a short video and one of the videos they shot, they showed was when all the people rushed out of the stands from the basketball game at the semifinal.
The buzzer beater.
Buzzer beater.
Yeah, and it was great. Like, it's dramatic and emotional to see. I mean, it's five seconds. Yeah, and it was great, like, it is dramatic and emotional to see, I mean, it's, it's five seconds. And everybody cheers and people rush out of the stands, and from the group of educators, I was like, I heard, aw, I got that kid, you guys stumped us.
Must've been someone from White Mountain.
Yeah. He was from White Mountain, and he was, he was really impressed with what we did, he was, oh, it was harsh.
He did that like, he did that like five times, like, you couldn't let it go, you could not let it go.
Yeah, he wouldn't let it go. Yeah, it was like, it was really, really wonderful.
What was really cool in your presentation, though, wasn't just the tech part, it was the mental health piece about those kids belonging to a group.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was all encompassing.
Yeah.
It was really great, it was wonderful what they did.
Lily put that in a report that they went and presented at this conference, but I did not say that it was an adult's conference, like, adult, for, for professionals.
There were hundreds of girls and our kids.
Yeah, yeah, that, that should get some community spotlight.
Yeah, the average age is well over fifty five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there was us.
Yeah, Craig and I go every year, but we don't give any.
No, no, you don't get that reaction, anything else?
It was good, thank you.
All right.
I wanted to say one thing, because of people like you and Craig, we have outstanding students like Lily. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think we work really hard.
This is really great to hear.
I can honestly say that we work in a place where everybody's first goal is, like, what's best for kids.
And you have a good cross section of kids that you brought there too, Cora and Joe and Silas, those people, like, they, they all have different interests and different angles.
Yeah, and they all, and that's what they spoke to, each of their, what that meant to them, and their angles that they did that. And we'll be bigger and better next year.
Oh, yeah, they already told us we have to.
They're already accepted, that's awesome.
Yeah, we're just gonna take over.
I mean, one of the things that this really goes to show is the, uh, is that coordination with our, uh, whether, I, I'm sure it was meant to be, uh, but that coordination with our, um, with our strategic plan, with our overall vision, and thinking about learning in ways that are meaningful to the participants.
Well, I mean, they were talking about how they built their path, you know, the kids were building the path, and the AV club and the school, and then the district and the community were supporting them and benefiting from that, and it was really great.
They represented, they represented the school and the town community well.
It's really well.
That's great, that's awesome. Um, I'll also say, I saw, I don't know if it's the most recent video, but I saw the, a video in the last week or two, um, where they talked about the, uh, going into the elementary schools, they, they showed kids, so I would encourage board members to go watch that video, that's a really, anytime to put a video on our channel, it's worth watching, so, cool. All right, anything else for Craig? All right, thank you so much, those are our quarterly reports, I didn't miss anybody, right?
No.
IRS is there.
IRS is there in your packet, uh, if you have questions for Kevin, direct them to Amanda, and she'll get back to him, so. Um, all right, next thing on our agenda, we have warrant articles, and I suppose we are looking for a vote on, articles five, six, seven, eight, and nine. Are we looking, do we need to vote?
You do not need to.
No, we don't, we can, we can vote at our fourteenth, the January fourteenth meeting. Yes, okay, but those are in there, um, anyone who feel like discussing, uh, five, six, seven, eight, or nine? So just so you know, five is for capital reserve, um, and they're putting, uh, the first recommendation is for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into our capital reserve fund for facilities, um, as you know, we've added some things to it, and so we need to get that replenished. Um, the next one would be accreditation activities for five thousand dollars, like the NEAS, like Tina was talking about. Um, next one is cafeteria equipment capital reserve fund, which we are, as you'll see later in your agenda, we're buying a dishwasher, and I believe we bought another dishwasher out of it earlier in the year, so that's for that. Um, the other one here is sustainability capital reserve fund, I don't, I'm not sure if we want, do we need to put ten thousand? Is there, did they want that in there, or was it just an idea?
I think we were assuming that that would be, um, something that the board would want.
Okay, we, I mean, think about that, we can discuss that, I'm not sure if we need to just yet, but, um, especially because we haven't moved, the solar stuff is still slow going, so we haven't done anything with the money yet, so I don't necessarily know we need to put more in, but we'll see. And then the last one would be to dissolve the major systems capital reserve fund, and I'd put that into the capital improvement fund, so. That way we'll eliminate that sort of confusion. Um, all right, next thing on our agenda, oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Um, so we don't have funds, special education capital reserve fund, or we are right without?
Um, we are, but, you know, the, it was asked of us to fund it just a little by little
Yeah.
um, in previous years, and so we've done that, we just haven't drawn from that, and I know that it is consistently comes up in the deliberative from public members who are concerned that we haven't used it, but we keep adding to it.
Yeah.
So right now, we feel that it is a sufficient amount to be able to provide a high cost placement for one student and possibly two. Um, so at this point, we are not recommending that we add more to that account.
Cool. All right, thanks for asking a question, because I'm sure that will come up, so. Um, all right, so next thing on the agenda is the budget, and we are looking for a vote on that, we can take another vote on that on the fourteenth, if we have more people here on January fourteenth, but you said you're not gonna be here on January fourteenth, right?
I didn't wanna bring it up, but unfortunately, I'm booked.
All right, that's okay.
I'm solid with basketball, you know that.
I do, so, all right, um, as you see here in the packet is the agenda, or the agenda, the budget, um, and the overall percentage increase for the entire district is one point two percent over, over default, which is incredible, I have to say, given the amount of, uh, increases in costs of things. To keep it at a one point two percent increase is, is pretty nuts, pretty good, so.
Do you wanna motion on that?
It's very good.
So that we can discuss, and we do have one item that we need to give feedback to the budget committee.
Oh, sure.
If we want to keep it in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, maybe more so, we approve the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, right, is it, right, is that what it is?
It's FY twenty six.
FY twenty six, yeah. Budget, district budget in the amount of thirty two thousand four hundred and forty eight, thirty two million, sorry, thirty two million, numbers are too big, thirty two million four hundred and forty eight thousand one hundred and five.
Okay, any more second?
Second.
Kathleen, second, all right, open for discussion, so, good.
So, a question that had come up as part of the, uh, as, as part of the budget, uh, work sessions and just conversations, was around our prior conversation around increasing the stipends, um, for school board members. Uh, the budget committee decided they did not want to include stipends for themselves, for the budget committee, uh, and I believe they did leave in the school board stipend increases.
They did.
Um, but just wanted to, if you didn't notice that in the budget committee, um, notes and minutes from those meetings, it did come up as a, you know, as a perception, um, of increasing, uh, even though it's, it's, you know, not gonna change that bottom line really that much, it's not gonna change percentage points or anything like that, um, but is it something that we wanna continue with, is the question. So it's been there right now, the amount that was motioned is, includes a couple thousand dollars more for school board member stipends, um, but just wanted to get feedback on whether or not that was something that, um, anyone had any issues with.
So I have a comment to add to that, at that budget hearing, you know, at the end of the discussion, Scott Sambor in the chair room, he pointed out that in the overall scope of the budget, we're talking about miniscule percentages in this. And we actually, as a board, we took a vote to support it, and I, I still think we need to support it, not for the fact that it would benefit ourselves, but we all know that we're not gonna be here forever.
Yeah.
And it's hard to find people to step up into these positions, and I think the stipends is something that helps people say, well, I, I guess I can do it, because we all know that, you know, we spend a, a lot more time on travel and expenses to get here and giving up our, like, when I was working, you, you guys are doing the same thing, you give up your vacation time to come and do some things that we have to do as board members. So it isn't like we're lining our pockets, we know that.
Yeah.
But I, I would hate to see us back down, because I didn't get the sense that the budget committee was against it. There's some, yeah, uh, some discussion, and that's it.
Yeah.
You know, Tim, you, you know my feelings on it.
Yep.
All right, and being, as I always say, seeing I'm the senior member on this board, being here the longest so far, I didn't get on it for the money.
That's right.
But I will, wait a minute, I will always, I will make sure, if it does come up during deliberate session, I would like to get up and speak, give guys that, because I think it does, I thank you very much, Kathleen, for saying that, because that's what I've been happening about for years, about this, and I just think it's a time to come, because as you sit here and you look at who we're, who's on the board, we're not gonna be here forever.
Okay.
And it's just, you know, and this record can know this, you go and look, I said this before, you go and see what, you know, not just other districts, what they pay their school board members, but what, what the, what, we, we represent five towns. And what, and what's, and what is, what, what do those guys get, those three people on that board, or whoever's on the, on the each town office person select can get?
Yeah, it varies.
It, it varies, but it doesn't vary what, what, what we get, and as I said, I didn't get on this for the money.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Yeah, if it comes up, it.
If it comes up, I, I would, that'd be the only thing I would wanna speak about on this thing, because the budget, and that's, is miniscule. I hope the heck they don't, that cameras about that.
The difference of thirty seven hundred dollars.
No, I know, I think it was, um, just for the background, it, um, was more, I think they were supportive, I mean, in terms of how much work is done and, and all that stuff, but I think it was an optics thing, and it's the third line, and we doubled it. You know, and it went up, so that was sort of the objection to it.
Number two on the list, that's one problem.
I, I get it, I get it.
Well, yeah, in a year when people are really struggling with the tax increases and.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I didn't get the sense that they were against it, they were just, be aware of it.
There it is.
Does that line also include the moderator, uh, or is that a different second line?
Uh, the moderator is included, Michelle, do you know which line is up, uh, I believe in line number three, the district clerk.
Clerk.
Secretary.
Okay. All right, as long as all these reasons are, are covered, that we put in.
I agree with, I agree with Kathleen, if I, you, you did a vote, and I don't expect you to come back and do another vote, you know, next meeting or the meeting after that, we already done this, you know.
Cool.
No, it was, it was just requested at the, through the budget committee.
We talked, we talked about during the finance facility meeting, they brought it up to me, and I, all right, I mean, it's the same thing. Kind of something comes up.
They wanted us to have a discussion.
Yeah. All right, anything else on the budget, anyone else have any questions or anything like that?
Just a comment, I think it, it's an excellent budget for a lot of work in there to hold that line down.
Yeah, they, they made some tough choices where they had to, and got creative where they had to, and found money where they had to, so, hats off to Martha Few, and this is Michelle's first budget season all by herself, so. We'll give you the congratulations fully in March, but this, this, the big part is, is good, so. Yeah, let's see.
Even it doesn't bad, you know.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is awesome, thank you. Um, all right, so, ready to call the votes? All of us, we're voting on the budget, on the school board, it'll be the votes up or down the warrant, so. Uh, all those in favor approving the FY twenty six budget in the amount of thirty two million four hundred and forty eight thousand one hundred and five dollars, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions.
Who seconded the motion?
Kathleen, go ahead, go.
Kathleen?
I didn't hear.
It was before, when, before we started discussion.
I understand, I didn't hear what it, I didn't hear, that's why I asked, that's all.
All right, next thing on there is the default budget, for your information, um, default budget is, what word? Default budget, uh, we don't have to vote on this, but that is thirty two, I'm in the right here, yes, thirty two million one hundred and twenty five thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars. So that's a difference of about three hundred, about three hundred thousand dollars, so, that's also really good.
Very close.
To be very close, no, uh, yeah, default is about three hundred thousand dollars less.
Yeah.
Also very close, so that's also good. All right, um, next thing on our agenda is accepting a donation from Hannaford Helps Schools Program to EBS. So entertain a motion for that.
We accept the donation from Hannaford Helps Schools Program, in the one thousand four hundred and twenty two dollars and four cents for the Enfield Village School.
Okay.
A second.
Kathleen, second, any discussion on that?
We didn't get, um, not, not discussion, why do we always have to accept, why do we, we accept it, why do we have to bring it up? Because it's done under a certain.
It's over a certain amount, it's over a thousand bucks, right?
I thought we were, I thought we were a different.
No, it's gifts.
We're still a thousand?
For gifts, yeah.
Okay, I'm just checking, I'm just double checking.
How do they, how do they pick, I wonder, I don't know, how they pick the schools that they're gonna help? That's the thing with the, with the, where you put your receipts in the thing, okay, I got you, I got you. All right, let's get, let's get our other schools on that list, too. Um, all right, all those in favor of accepting the donation from Hannaford for one thousand four hundred and twenty two dollars and four cents, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions, all right, thank you much to everybody who shop in Hannaford to do that. All right, next thing on our agenda, we have the Galapagos trip, uh, fundraising and approval, did you?
I didn't see anything in the packet.
Yeah.
We don't see anything in the packet, we have something better, we have crispy, so is.
Yay, all right.
Yeah, so there's nothing in the packet, um.
You're looking for permission to fundraise for the trip, right?
Yeah, that's all we're looking at, and we should be having, um, we should be getting stuff from India and the, uh, the travel company within the next couple of weeks on, um, on, um, you know, what the costs of that are, and so I think the timeline for us, it was a perfect number of kids that went the last time, perfect number of staff, we wanna keep it that, that size. And, and then run it the same going in April of twenty six, leaving on the Thursday, coming back on the following Sunday, and then, um, our first parent meeting would be in January twenty five, and then start to collect deposits somewhere in, in February, and then, and then get going with, you know, fundraising. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a long haul, and it's, 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 it's an expensive trip.
It is, but they do a lot of fundraising, and they do a lot of work.
Yeah, like, like Lily in particular, um, she had lived, she, um, she earned a lot of money on the, on the last time, they, that, that, so there'll be lots of opportunities for, you know, for kids, um, I'll, I'll probably run the track again. And, and then, you know, the high school will, um, you know, Lindsay and, and Tina will, will do other stuff for fundraising as well.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, did I hear your motion?
Yeah, I did, I made the motion.
Make a motion to?
Go ahead, make the fundraising.
You made a motion to approve?
Yep, that's, that's right.
Contributing, all right, for fundraising, all right, did I second? All right, Danielle second, any further discussion?
Yeah, so, last year, it got very stressy because of the state level, you know, uh.
Oh, the, um, the travel alert?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we at one?
No, we're still at two.
It's still a two.
It's always, yeah, it's still a two.
It's always gonna be a two.
Always gonna be a two, yeah.
But nothing really has changed that you're aware of.
Not that I know of, no.
It's not like we're going there next week anyway, so.
But we were close to having to pull it at one point, weren't we?
I don't think we were ever close to pulling it, but we, we were like, kinda keeping a pulse.
I think you have insurance, Craig, you have insurance.
Well.
Somewhat.
Yeah, some, somewhat, the, the insurance, so, the insurance.
Well, I remember last year.
Yeah, the insurance, the devil's in the detail on the insurance.
It has to do with, like, the State Department declare something.
It has to be, yes, so it had to either go to a three, or the State Department would have to sort of shut it down, but, um, you know, anything that would stay at a, at state or two, so really, the only thing that you could use the insurance for, let's say, two days before I came down with COVID.
Yeah.
Then your, then your insurance would, would work on that.
Yeah. All right.
So the insurance, was it because it's at a two, or it's?
So you could, on the front end of this, you could do a cancel for any reason, so I believe the insurance was like one ninety five or one seventy five or something like that.
About two hundred.
It was about two hundred, you could do an optional cancel for any reason. The cost of that insurance would be like five or six hundred dollars per, to do, to have that kind of a thing. Um, and you have to have that, I believe, like, you have to do that within like three days of, like, booking the trip or something like that. I think in the end, I think people were, were comfortable with.
They know what they're getting into.
Yeah, exactly, and I think we will, you know, clearly outline that in, in January for people, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the Galaptos trip for fiscal year twenty six and the fundraising associated with it, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, abstentions, all right. Have fun, and we look forward to more videos like that. Amanda, is Reese, is Reese gonna go?
Reese will go.
Nice, all right. Nice, all right. Cool. Okay. Next on our agenda is a CES dishwasher bid. And as you can see in your packet, there are three bids there with a recommendation to award the bid to Singer. So entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to take the bid for Singer, $15,352.24.
Okay.
Second.
And Danielle seconds. Any discussion on this? This is coming out of the cafeteria fund or just, we just?
We have this in the upper.
We have it in the budget? All right. Good deal. Sometimes the budget is, it works out. All right. All those in favor of awarding the bid for the CES dishwasher to Singer in the amount of $15,352.24, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. All right.
Danielle's up next.
Well, hold on, before you do that, next thing, as chair, I'm just going to table two policies right now because there will be lengthy discussions and it is almost eight o'clock. I'm going to table policy JL CJA and policy JLP for a future meeting. So we can leave those off the second readings right now.
JL CJA?
JL CJA and policy JLP. I'm going to table those until the next meeting.
Okay. So. All right, so make a motion that we approve for second reading and adoption. Policy GB GBA slash JLCEA slash KFD, use of automated external defibrillators.
You don't have to repeat it. No, it's all the same.
Slash, slash, you get it. Policy JLF, reporting child abuse or neglect. Policy JLF dash F1, reporting child abuse or neglect report form. Policy DID, inventory and management of assets. Policy EEAB, establishment of school bus routes. Policy BAA, school board policies and administrative procedures. And policy DAF, administration of federal grant funds.
All right.
A second.
And Kathleen seconds. All right. So these are all second readings. We did not change, I don't think, any of these. A lot of them are, they're pretty tight.
For three point law.
All right. Any comments, questions, concerns on any of those?
I can't go that fast with him. Go ahead, no, quick.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I'm just, my secretary is taking care of my paperwork over here.
Yeah, I just pulled two of them because that would be a longer discussion, so.
That won't be.
Hey, I know you want to get to the Bruins game, so.
Well, it's already, we're good, we got it, we're good.
Okay. So all those second reading policies?
I'm not going to the game, so.
I know, you're on. So yeah, automated external defibrillator, reporting child abuse or neglect, inventory management of assets, establishment of bus routes, school board policies and administrative procedures and federal grant funds. All right. All those in favor of second reading adoption of those policies signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. All right. A little bit more here.
Okay, and now make a motion that we approve for first reading. Policy EBCH, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan. Policy EBCHE1, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan procedures. Policy IGE, parental objections to specific course materials. Policy IHAM, health education and exemption from instruction. And policy IKF, high school graduation requirements.
All right. Okay, Bruce, all right, cool. All right. Any discussion on chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan? I actually can speak to this because I actually helped the school association write this one because I did this for my job. So my job, we deal with hazardous household waste as well as school chemicals. We got a grant from the US Department of Agriculture to work on this and help schools maintain chemical hygiene safety plans. So basically what this is saying is that we will inventory, like science teachers and art teachers will inventory what chemicals they have and they'll come up with a plan on how to make sure that they take care of them so they're not just hanging out here in the building just degrading. So that's that one. Parental objections to specific course materials.
Is there anything that changed in, in these that?
Well, yep, I can go through them if you'd like.
Sure.
So Tim spoke about the chemical.
I was excited to see it, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah.
My world's not crossed that often, so.
Yeah. He really likes policies.
I do, I do.
Yeah.
IJE, you'll see that those are updates from September, just reflective of new RSA's other statutes. So I had suggested we just update to the Hannaford School Board Association's legal candor there. Policy IHAM, updated to more legal changes. So once again, just making sure that we are in compliance legally and the School Board Association does a real nice job of getting us there. There's a little bit of change here in the health education and notification to parents about the teaching of sensitive materials. So that's, that's where that piece comes from.
Yeah, that's good.
And along with that, you know, just a little more specificity in the letters that are sent home to parents and letting them know what is happening in those classes. IKF, high school graduation. We did a lot of work on this policy in EIC when Nancy Murphy was our curriculum director. And so what we really did was just tweak out to, the major piece that came out of this was the FASPA, FASPA application. Last year was required for students, they had to complete FASPA. Even if they did not intend on going to college, they had to complete it. They have removed that requirement for graduation. So it was important, that's an important change to this policy that we no longer have to require or mandate our students to complete that form before they graduate. So that's the biggest one in that. And yeah, that's it. Wow, that's it.
That's great.
You know what? Because I was looking at this one for graduation and I saw the civics exam that was added last year and it just reminded me, it was like, oh yeah, last year was the first year, or this, this spring was the first year that they took it. I'm curious how our kids did. I'm just, that would be an interesting thing for us to see, how well our kids did. Yeah, yeah, just like, yeah, follow, yeah, yeah, she can include it because now it's new. So I'd like to know where our baseline is. Yes. All right.
I know that the, one of the biggest changes to this we did with Nancy was upping the minimum amount of credits.
Yes.
Are we ready to do that? I mean, is that being looked at? Is 23 enough?
23, I, I think is a good place right now for our kids, especially now that we have a more robust ELO program. So we have a lot of kids taking online courses through V-Lax, especially of interest. You'll see the AV club. All those kids are in ELO. So you're, you're just seeing, and we have the addition of the senior seminar piece. So you've seen a lot of new innovative classes come. I have less kids in dead study hall time by choice.
By senior year is that one of the issues?
So, yeah, right now.
Is not so much an issue with the 23 or?
Yeah, 23 kids are pretty busy.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not something.
And that was the goal, we really did remember, yeah.
Okay.
The only thing I would change on this is I would up the arts requirement to a full credit or even a credit and a half and drop the open electives down by a half or a full credit. That's, that's my personal thing that I would change, but.
Because, that's because.
Yeah, I know, AIC can look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
I almost see the credits going higher.
No, 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 it would just be move shifting from open to.
It depends. If you give them electives, they do what they want to do. On something else, they, some kids might not want to do arts. So, I mean, I know your, your kids are like that, you like arts, I, you know.
Yeah, well-rounded education. So in a half a credit, I don't think is enough, so.
Also the faculty should weigh in on this.
Tim, that's your prerogative, man. I'm just telling you, I'm just saying. We didn't have to do that much, bless you, yes.
All right. Any other questions on any of these? All right. All those in favor of approval for first reading? Policy EBCHE, IGE, IHAM and IKF, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. All right. And we didn't have any rescissions that we had to do. So that's good, cool. All right. Agenda items for next meeting, which will be January 14th. We'll have committee reports, the warrant articles to vote on, filing dates for candidates. Also, please schedule in your calendar Wednesday, the January 15th. That is the joint school board and budget committee public hearing. I believe that is the date. So please put that on your calendar because that's important for us to be there as well. So we'll have a meeting going on like right after with the budget committee. All right. Public comment? Yes, representative?
Three quick things I won't keep. First of all, Kathleen, I appreciate the reference to special education, any, any of that information. I'm not sure there's much I can do about it, but I would try. The second thing is, and I know Amanda and I have talked about this and I think, you know, there've been some great steps in terms of communication to the community, particularly people who do not have children in schools. Just tonight, I mean, I, I feel like I'm more informed than most adults who don't have kids in the schools. But just tonight, I'm learning about some other things that are incredible, including the, the tech conference. I'd just encourage you to get that information out there in ways that the general public, non-parents can, can see. And, you know, it's not just the sporting activities, although I think that's critically important in terms of community pride. But, you know, the, the artistic endeavor, the literary magazine, the IT stuff. I mean, there's incredible stuff going on that I don't think people recognize. And the third thing is now that I know that the, you've got the two buses, I would just invite any of your teachers to talk to me about bringing kids down to the state house.
Oh, yeah.
You know, to come visit for a day, tour the state house, watch a session, even if it's only for a few minutes because it's probably not the most interesting thing, even the high school thing.
I mean, my kid sister's in boys.
Oh, and the last thing, and, and this is, this is something I think many people are not aware of. State reps are obviously, we're not in for the money.
That's an understatement, yeah.
Yeah. As you well noted. But, and, and Tim, you'll understand this, state reps have two roles in, in the Hampshire government. In addition to representing, you know, being a representative and conqueror at the state level, we also serve as the legislature for the county. So if there are issues specifically dealing with the county, we have a role there too. So, and, and apparently earlier this week I got elected to the executive committee of the county delegation as well, so.
Congratulations.
All right.
Yeah.
That pays a lot more too, right?
Actually, actually it does pay a little. You know, I think it's like $25. Exactly, so. But anyway, thank you all for the work you guys are doing and you deserve the words.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for coming in. Of course, you can follow along and watch our recordings on the Massoma Schools YouTube channels, you know, or when you have time and you want to see what else.
You don't want to come in.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to commit to making every meeting. But I am going to try to make at least, you know, once a quarter or so.
Yeah, that's great, it's great.
You have the quarterly reports night. That's what is interesting.
Fourth graders usually go to the state house in March, February, I don't know. Some point, you'll have fourth graders there. And I know, I think John Swedland brings a class down there at least, but yeah. And then I know we've had kids sing the national anthem there and stuff too, so.
And don't forget about your chicken thing.
And my chicken, we got, we had a Canadian elementary kids got the chicken, the state pulled it back. So that was also very, very exciting, so.
Yeah, the meanest words in the world.
From the civics, you know how they did in the civics lessons.
Yeah.
Yeah, they kind of have stuff like that.
Students.
That's right, you have them.
I didn't catch where he's from. I didn't catch his name, I didn't catch where he's from. Where are you from, sorry?
I, I live in Kane.
You live in Kane, okay.
This is, this is Tom Obel.
Obel, thanks.
Yeah, Tom Obel.
Yeah, the last time we had, we had a whole group come in here, we invited, invited them a couple of years back and they all came in here and one was a judge from Franklin and we had a whole bunch in here of guys who become state reps. We had them all in here one night, so we ended up talking to them and stuff.
Yeah, I think that's a.
That was a good, that was a good thing. So if you go back to your constituents down there, the ones that are near us, let them know what's happening with us.
Well, my district, my district is Keenan, Dorchester and Orange.
Yeah.
So there's another representative for Enfield, David Frack. And then we're also, the, the five towns in this district are half of the district 18, which is Donovan Farley's district.
But he lives in Orange, so.
And he lives in.
So he is local too, so we can.
And his district goes from Enfield over to Bristol.
Yeah.
So he covers Gray.
Yep.
Don does, yeah.
He covers Gray. He covers all five of the Massoma Regional School District towns plus five towns in the new, new town district.
All right, cool. Any other public comment?
No, just if, this is more appropriate, if you could get it into the summer newsletter or something. Friends Massoma is still giving mini grants, we're not getting, many people asking for mini grants.
That's something the principals can put in their newsletter to their staff too, yeah?
We've only been able to give out either two or three this year so far.
Yeah, let's get on that, for sure.
They have good money.
And for the ABD kids.
And for the student, yes.
They'll, they'll do just about anything to buy more.
Also for all seniors, scholarships opens up January 4th.
All right, and you guys are very generous with those scholarships received, that's for sure.
We budget another $30,000 for this year.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next thing, we have personnel resignations and resignations here.
Make a motion to accept the nomination, resignation as presented.
Okay. Green sheet here.
Yeah, it's the green sheet.
Yep.
It's a green sheet, but.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, Bruce for seconds. All right. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, abstentions. And I presume we have non-public?
I make a motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to go to non-public.
Okay.
Purpose of society.
Purpose of society.
Like, like she said.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And who second?
Danielle.
Oh, Vicki's going to second. All right. Brister?
Yes.
Danielle?
Yes.
Tim, yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Oh, Vicki. All right, we're in non-public. Oh my God, Tim and Steph are going to take on wrestling and IRS.
The live stream.
A live feed, I'm sorry.
So fill you in on what's happening.
I'm going to second and we'll move on.
Yeah.
Because I know for a fact I have to get my schedule and I have to go solid through the whole one. Yeah, I like it almost.